I will now call to order the September 5th, 2024 Clackamas County Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council Jane Vedo, our new clerk to the board Andrew Jirocky. Tony Mayernick has been promoted to another role in the county, so he will be moving on from this role although he's helping support the meeting today. Welcome Andrew. Role call Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've would join us during via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith. First is a presentation recognizing the 2024 Clackamas County Spirit of Excellence Award recipients. These are county employees and you'll learn more about this in just a moment. Evelyn Minor Lawrence is the Director of Human Resources and she will present the honorees and then at the end we'll ask for a photo op with all of you Commissioners. So go ahead Evelyn and Natalie. Thank you Natalie.
Good morning Commissioners and welcome to the Spirit of Excellence Award presentation. I want to take a few minutes to just give a brief history of the A-Team. So the county's Activities Committee, we refer to them as the A-Team. This is a group of employees, county employees, that really dedicate their time by volunteering to foster employee connectivity within Clackamas County and engagement. Under the sponsorship of the county administrator, the A-Team has elected, have really elevated recognition in our county. We are excited to celebrate the 11th year of a collaborative relationship between the A-Team and the Human Resources Department in presenting the Spirit of Excellence Award. This year, we had over 100 nominations for this award, recognizing employees for their outstanding service and dedication to Clackamas County. Today, of that 100 employees, we have selected 10 honorees to be recognized today in this event. The awardees embody the county's core values, spirit, and I'll explain what spirit is for those watching. Spirit stands for service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. Their exceptional efforts not only enhance our community but also reflect the high standards of Clackamas County. As I call out each awardee's name and department, I would like each of them to come forward to receive their receipt, their certificate. All of the awardees will have been, once I've presented all of the awardees, then I will also like to acknowledge those that are not here today. As I said, we are honoring 10 and only six of them were able to participate today. So I'm going to turn my chair around and acknowledge our honorees. So first I'd like, oh speak. Okay, how do I do it? I can sit down and turn? Okay, so I'll start with Jonathan Lee from Facilities Management. And I'm especially proud of this next awardee, Jarrett Haddock, Human Resources. Marco Inseco?
Seeso.
Seeso. Megan Fogner, Health Housing and Human Services. Tracy Ashby, Health Housing and Human Services. Okay, we want equal applause even for those four that weren't able to be here today. I'll call them out. Jennifer Arisal from Clackamas 911. Clyde Frye, Business and Community Services. Kristi Wade, Health Housing and Human Services. And Scott McComb, North Clackamas Park and Rec District. I'd also like to let the board know that this year's awardees, all 10 of them, will be posted, their profiles will be posted on the A-Team's internet page as well. So at this time, let's give all of our nominees a hand and we'll come up and take photos.
All the award winners, please come forward. All the award winners come forward and the board, would you please come forward? We'll do a photo op.
Oh wonderful. Thank you all for participating.
Nope. They're not staying.
We're just gonna let them have fun.
Turns out the consent agenda is not that riveting.
Really?
We're grateful for our amazing employees. These are just 10, but we have 2,500 employees who all work very hard every day to serve the public and to support you Commissioners in implementing your direction. So thank you to our amazing employees. Thank you for honoring our employees Commissioners, it means a lot to them. They appreciate it.
How is someone nominated?
They're self-nominated by other employees who nominate their peers for great work and then there was a selection committee that reviewed all the applicants and then came to the top 10 for you today.
Unfortunately, our room is empty now, almost empty.
Well, there's a couple.
Yeah, there's a couple diehards. We will now continue with the business meeting. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the consent agenda. Andrew will read the consent agenda. Go ahead, please, Andrew.
Thank you Administrator Schmidt. Consent Agenda. Item A: Elected Officials. Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes, Board of County Commissioners. Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Bluecrest for a Mail Ballot Sorter and Related Software. Contract Value is $689,931. Funding through Clerk Fees and $289,771 in Budgeted County General Funds. Item B: Finance. Approval of a Goods and Services Contract with Cone Incorporated for Elevator Maintenance and Repair Services at County Facilities. Contract Value Not to Exceed $235,150.47 Over Four Years and Ten Months. Funding is through Departmental Cost allocations, which may include a small portion of budgeted County General Funds. Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with the Oregon Department of Emergency Management for Infrastructure Damage in the 2024 Ice Storm. Anticipated Agreement Value is $518,000. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. No County General Funds are involved. Item C: Tourism. Approval of Amendment Number One to a Professional Services Contract with Travel Portland to Implement Portions of the Regional Tourism Plan. Amendment Value is $177,743 for One Year. Total Contract Value is Increased to $336,200 for Two Years. Funding is through Travel Portland. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Professional Services Contract with Fish Marketing and Strategy to Provide Social Media Advertising Management. Total Contract Value is Not to Exceed $675,000 Over Five Years. Funding is through Transit Lodging Tax. No County General Funds are involved. Item D: Health Housing and Human Services. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Northwest Family Services for Expanding Treatment of and Recovery for Services of Pregnant Women with Substance Use Disorders. Agreement Value is $200,000 for Two Years. Funding is through Opioid Settlement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Northwest Family Services to Expand Access to School Based Prevention Programs. Agreement Value is $100,000 for One Year. Funding is through Opioid Settlement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with the Fourth Dimension Recovery Center for Expanding Treatment of Substance Use Disorders. Agreement Value is $99,995.14 For One Year. Funding is through Opioid Settlement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon State University for Healthy Private Well Stewardship. Agreement Value is $50,350 for Ten Months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Approval to Apply to the Veterans Health Administration Innovation Ecosystem Suicide Prevention Grant to Develop and Implement New Strategies in Reducing Oregon's Veteran Suicide Rate. Anticipated Value is $750,000 over Two Years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number One: Updating the Language and Adjusting the Rate of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon for the Public Health Medicaid Administrative Claiming Program. Amendment Has No Fiscal Impact. Agreement Value Remains $1,900,000 Over Five Years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Technical Resource Management for Behavioral Health Laboratory Testing Services. Contract Value is $900,000 for Five Years. Funding is through Health Centers Fees for Service. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number One to a Fixed Price Revenue Subagreement from Oregon State University for Parenting Education Program. Amendment Value is $98,035 for One Year. Agreement Value Increased to $274,098 for Two Years. Funding is through Oregon State University. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Public Improvement Contract with Pacific Sun Construction for the Phase Two of Haven House Building Improvements Project. Agreement Value is $567,576.20 For Ten Months. Funding is through Federal Community Development Block Grant Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval to Apply for a Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund Discretionary Grant for Updating the Clackamas County Transit Development Plan. Application Value is $300,000 for Two Years. Funding is through Statewide Transportation Improvement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval to Apply for a Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund Discretionary Grant for the Support of the Mount Hood Transit Enhancements Project. Application Value is $450,000 for Two Years. Funding is through Statewide Transportation Improvement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval to Apply for a Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund Discretionary Grant for the Purchase of Two New Vehicles for Use on the Mount Hood Express. Application Value is $350,000 For Two Years. Funding is through Statewide Transportation Improvement Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item E: Transportation and Development. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Oregon City to Transfer a Portion of South Forsyth Road. Total Value is $23,590. Funding through Community Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Water Environment Services for Right-of-Way Services. Total Value is $225,000 over Five Years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer and Surface Water Construction Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval Amendment Number Three to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon for the Fire Hardening Grant Program. Amendment Has No Fiscal Impact. Agreement Remains $172,072. Funding through State of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Funding Agreement with the Clackamas County Arts Alliance to Support Businesses, Organizations, Entrepreneurs, and Public Art Exhibitions Throughout the County. Agreement Value is $110,000 for One Year. Funding through County-Allocated Lottery Dollars. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of a Funding Agreement with the Museum of the Oregon Territory to Provide Educational Programs, Cultural and Historical Preservation, and to Maintain and Manage the Facility and Venue. Agreement Value is $100,000 for One Year. Funding through County-Allocated Lottery Dollars. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Technical Services on the Oregon 224 at Amziger Road Roundabout Project. Total Value is $35,000. Funding through Community Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Approval to Apply for a Metro Regional Flexible Funds Allocation for the Sunrise Corridor. Funding Request is $15 Million. Funding through Metro Regional Flexible Funds Bond with Matching Funds through the County Road Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Right-of-Way, Easements, and Fee Property, and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Johnson Creek Boulevard, 79th Place, to End of County Maintenance Improvements Project. Total Project Value is $6,172,749. Funding is through HB 2017 Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of Personnel Services Contract with Kittleson Associates for the Stafford 65th Alexander Roundabout Project. Total Contract Value is $1,47,863.44. Funding through the Strategic Investment Fund, Community Road Fund, Countywide Transportation System Development Charges, and Local Agencies. No County General Funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Nine with PNC Construction for Added Solar Panels for the Gladstone Public Library Project. Amendment Value is $188,672.21. Funding through the County Sustainability Funds. No County General Funds are involved.
That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much Andrew. That was your first attempt and it was very well done. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has ammued approval of the consent agenda and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Andrew, I'll read it but if you'll post it online. Item One: Approval of an Amendment to an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Transportation Services and Equipment. The Amendment Adds One Year. Total Grant Value Remains $25,000 for Two Years. Funding is through the State of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of Amendment Number Two to an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Transportation Services and Equipment. The Amendment Adds $25,000. Total Grant Value is Increased to $50,000 for Two Years. Funding is through the State of Oregon. No County General Funds are involved. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove anything off this particular consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Scholl has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda and Director Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and convene as a Water Environment Services Board.
This is now the consent agenda for Water Environment Services. Andrew, I'll give it back to you if you'll please read the consent agenda.
Item A: Approval of Amendment Number Seven to a Contract with Tyler Technologies for Utility Billing Software and Support. Amendment Value is $152,481.69 for Two Years. Increasing Total Contract Value to $781,874.32 Over Twenty-Four Years and Ten Months. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer and Surface Water Operating Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Item B: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas County for Right-of-Way Services. Total Value is $225,000 over Five Years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer and Surface Water Construction Funds. No County General Funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove anything from this particular consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda for West.
Director Savis has moved for the approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda and Director Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the poll?
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as a Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda for the Development Agency. Andrew, sorry. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item A: Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Harper-Hoof-Purton Regals, Inc. for Construction Services Relating to the Southeast Monroe Street Improvements Project. Total Value is $1,334,013. Funding is through North Clackamas Revitalization Area Funds. No County General Funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove any item off of this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Scholl has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda and Director Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the poll?
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And here we are at public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us and they will become part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and I will take in-person testimony first. I do have a blue card for one person and that is Les Poole. Would you please come forward? Welcome.
Good morning. Campaign season starts today, the 60 days. I'm not here to comment on campaigns except to say that any month a candidate has to be careful about where they put their signs. We have a situation where people think their signs are stolen and you find out that ODOT picked them up because they were in the right-of-way. So a rule of thumb is the utilities and the power poles are in the road right-of-way. So if your campaign sign's sticking out beyond them or in front of them, it's subject to being taken. So I'm certainly not here to go saying I'm going to be collecting campaign signs, but it's a lot of work to get them out there and you want to be seen and so that's just a subject I wanted to touch on. On my way here, I thought of all the things I could talk about, possibly I could somehow request maybe an update or something or more information about the Sunrise Corridor. And I'm a full supporter of the project. For those that don't know about it, we basically have an expressway that needs to continue out beyond Terry Emmerich's property, beyond 122nd, up the hill to 172nd. But it really needs to go beyond there. And my concern is that the limitations that Metro places on their grants and the control they have over the process will take away some of the connectivity and turn it in, you know, it needs to be a multipurpose corridor. But it really needs to serve its initial purpose. And most of us, probably everyone here is familiar with the intersection of Springwater Road and 224 and that whole traffic mess on 224. It's only going to get worse. So anything we can do to make that project happen and not lose the connectivity and the big picture that it needs to go beyond 172nd would be appreciated. I've got a little time left and I'm going to have a little fun here. I haven't been in in a while. This is a flyer from across the river. I am working for Let's Go Washington in Clark County and we are getting the vote out, getting the word out on four initiatives that have qualified for the ballot in Washington. And it's a familiar story. There's Olympia and there's Salem, the sister cities as I call them. And what's occurred is the last day of their session, they passed a ban on gas stoves in new homes. They've got a 50 cent gas tax that purportedly is going to do a lot for the climate and it really isn't.
Go ahead, continue.
Thank you. There are a couple of other measures on here, but my point is the people are really feeling the economics and concerned about some of the priorities of what's going on and government overreach. I would just say that we're in a different paradigm than we were a few years ago. So many people have not recovered from COVID and we've had some really bad economic policies in Oregon and across the country. So here, people are really feeling the pressure and you've got legislators banning gas stoves and supporting special interests. And my message to everyone that's out there is be informed. If it sounds too good to be true, especially if it's from Metro, it's probably not. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Just a side note on campaigns, you know, there's, like you say last, there's the state right-of-way for state roads, highways. And then there's county roads and there's a different rule that applies to county roads, which I believe we can put campaign signs in county right-of-way. I believe that's okay. And then the cities, I think every city has their own rules for that too. So it is best to get permission when you can to put up a campaign sign. Thank you for that, bringing that forward. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify today? Seeing none. Clerk, is there anyone online who wants to testify?
If you have not registered to testify and would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. I see no members of the public waiting online to speak, Chair Smith.
Thank you Andrew. I will now close the public communication portion of this hearing and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to recognize our employees for the good work they do during my time. Today, I want to honor our team from Health Housing and Human Services, our Suicide Prevention Program staff. As you may know, September As you may know, September is National Suicide Prevention Month in the United States, and our staff in H3S, working with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, has teamed up to launch a pilot project called Safer Home Boxes. This is to ensure safe access to firearms within the home, because unfortunately, most suicide attempts may involve a firearm. So the Safer Home Boxes is, and already one hundred and fifty of these boxes have been distributed at the county's Public Safety Training Center. These boxes include lock boxes, trigger locks, and information on where to go for mental health support, where to take suicide prevention trainings, and where to seek help if someone is in need of assistance. This program has received positive feedback. One person wrote in, "Thank you that our community offers this package of resources and products to make gun owners have safe access and more knowledgeable and safe for our homes. I wish more communities nationwide did this." So thank you to our staff in Health, Housing and Human Services and our Sheriff's Office, and we look forward to seeing the results of this pilot program in the future. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. First is Commissioner West.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to take a quick minute to thank the staff. That was a great showing. I'm very proud of, like you said, Gary, the nearly twenty-five-hundred people that choose to give us their labor and their talents and their abilities, and they show up every day and do the good work for the public. We are excelling in so many areas, and we are very much reliant on their talents. And so it was wonderful to have the opportunity, actually, any opportunity we have, to recognize their efforts. And I want to give them a special shout-out during my comments today and say I'm very grateful and thankful, not just to all ten of them that didn't win, but everyone that was nominated, which there was a hundred, which means I think there's a good culture here in Clackamas County. We just got off break. It was a wonderful break, except I mostly was a nurse the whole entire break, so I didn't really take a break. And then your phone still rings as a county commissioner, even when you're supposedly on a break. I'm sure we can all attest to that. Important emails coming in, media's trying to get comments from us, things that are still left undone. We still try to keep a pulse on what's happening in the county. One big issue that happened while we were on break was deflection became the law again, our deflection program. For a little history, the legislature to try to find a fix, I call it a soft fix, to Measure One Ten, passed House Bill Four Thousand and Two this last session, it was a bipartisan effort. That took effect on the first, just going into the holiday weekend. So many of us were at the beach or on a barbecue. The law significantly changed in Clackamas County and across Oregon, which means that, starting on the first, that individuals can be arrested for possession of illicit substances. Measure One Ten didn't really allow that, but we've made a change. Our goal is not to have people incarcerated or to get the help they need necessarily in the environment known as the criminal justice system or the jail system, but it's to deflect them to a pathway that allows them to get the care and the treatment that they need and allows them to have a lot of off-ramps, so that they don't have to intersect with the justice system or ever even be charged. A lot of conversations with our DA, and still some concerns. It's underfunded. We talked about the algorithm this week that talked about how the funding was going to happen for deflection. Also, it's the same algorithm that the state uses on our Measure One Ten. We have some issues with that funding. We're learning how to do even more with less, even if it's unfair in Clackamas County. One issue that we want to be aware of with this that's coming up with the task force is that there is a requirement by the state to collect an insane amount of data from OHSU. It's unfunded also, but it almost will take another FTE probably to collect and manage the data that they're trying to require from the state to be able to, like, move forward with the deflection process. I think data is important. I think the evidence is important to direct our policy. We understand that. But this might be somewhat onerous and burdensome on local governments, and once again, it might as well just call it what it is, an unfunded mandate. The DA's office, which already works very well, but very lean, I think this is going to be hard for them. So we want to be aware of these strings and requirements as we jump more and more into the sublection process, that OHSU data collection, which is a detailed, difficult process that's over thirty pages long, that requires constant monitoring, is going to be a little bit of a pain point, I think, for the county. I had the honor to represent the county at Las Flores. Many people know about this. It's a new development just down the road here where it is low-income housing, and it focuses a lot of its efforts on those that are thirty percent to sixty percent of the AMI. It's a total of one hundred and seventy-one homes. The housing is for, there's a number of housings within that, one hundred and seventy-one that are set aside for farm workers and agricultural workers, permanent supportive housing, which we're well accustomed here in Clackamas County. And I was really excited to learn yesterday that eight of those units are for veterans supportive housing for those that are struggling with homelessness. It's a beautiful project. It's just over four acres. It costs just over seventy, I think around seventy million dollars. The funding was braided from federal fundings and our Supportive Housing Services Bond, which is now exhausted, but we did allocate sixteen million dollars as a county to that project. And we're a part of that here in Clackamas County. It was wonderful to spend the time in the celebration and the ribbon-cutting with Mayor McGriff. She was fantastic and a lot of fun. We had some gelato together. And Christine Lewis with Metro Council was there, gave beautiful remarks about the importance of this housing. I was honored to represent the Board of County Commissioners, and it was a really fun time. Media was there, a lot of people in the community that are housed there were able to be there. They call it Las Flores, and I'll tell you right now, the flowers are in bloom on the property already, and so we appreciate that. And it was nice to see some of the labors and the works and the collaborative work that we've done to come to fruition and to help people from all walks of life, regardless of their socioeconomic status, feel like they belong here in Clackamas County. We want you to belong. We need you in our community. You enrich it. And that was the message, and it was quite a celebration. I was honored to be there. Last thing I'll talk about, Chair, is just before we went, I think you were with me, Chair, we toured the Twenty-three Hour Stabilization Center with legislators. Senator Lieber was there. A number of legislative leadership was wanting to see what we were doing. We're getting up and running what Monoma County still has been unable to get up and running, if you watch the media. And that's our Twenty-three Hour Stabilization Center, but it's not just a stabilization center for twenty-three hours for those struggling with behavioral health crisis. A wing of it will also provide short-term care slash housing until we navigate people where they need to go. I really appreciate how Clackamas County is looking at a care continuum and filling those gaps and moving people along as appropriate and necessary wherever they're at in their recovery process. We are renoing that, I don't know, the demos and the reno is happening now, and it will open in fall of 2025. We can't get these things open up fast enough, but we're doing the best we can to build the infrastructure. And so it was a great break. I don't have much more to add, and I look forward to what's coming in September and October, Chair. Thank you for the time.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. Well, first of all, I, too, want to recognize our employees. As a former employer, I certainly understand the value that any company or organization has with regards to its workforce, and we can't really do our work without a strong workforce that is skilled, trained, and dedicated to their mission. And I appreciate here in Clackamas County that we have just that here. So kudos and congratulations to all the awardees today for their, being recognized for their work and to all the others, again, for their contribution every day. Wasn't just a couple, three weeks ago, we were at the fair, and so ran into a lot of people, some of which we know that I would say are, you know, either involved in government or involved politically or whatnot. But they're also what I call the normal folks, right? The people that are just not interested in government or not interested in politics, that are just living their days, and you see them because you recognize them from whatever course of life that you've had. And in that vein, the last couple of weeks, even though there was a lot of work, like, you know, still happening as a commissioner during the break, did have an opportunity to interface with a lot of people, I'm going to call the normal people, that are disconnected from what our world. And having a lot of discussions about, you know, how they are, how they're doing today, and I'm reflecting back fourteen years ago when I ran for this position. We were in a, for those of you who remember, in this recession, right? And we're trying to build out of this recession. And there was a lot of concern and angst, and a lot of people that unemployed and not a lot of opportunity for people to get jobs. And, but if you look at the cost of housing four years ago, or fourteen years ago, you look at the moment in time then, and you look at where we are today, it's changed significantly. This is, I won't say this is not what I signed up for, but that's not what I mean to say. What I mean to say is that I didn't ever anticipate we'd be in this position where we are today. People that I've been talking to, interfaced with, whether at the fair or the last couple of weeks, talking about the struggles that they're all experiencing. And these are all income levels. I'm not talking about any particular income level. The cost of food, big one for everyone. And it really came to heart a little bit during the last week or so with a strike at a local, at Fred Meyer. So a lot of those conversations were, you know, percolated during that period of time. Challenges with traffic congestion. People are moving farther away because they can't afford their housing, whether they rent or want to own or want to start a family. They're moving farther away, but yet they're commuting in every day to the metro region. And I'm not talking farther away necessarily in Clackamas County. Other counties, whether they're north, west, east, or south. Talked to someone who drove in, Crook County, drives it from Crook County, it's a three-hour drive, no problem. He's a young guy, comes to work, construction worker, three hours' drive, just to come in and three hours to go home on a daily basis. That, he can afford his home. The taxes are very low, property taxes are extremely low. So that's not uncommon. It's not uncommon. You've had people who drive from Eugene, drive from Centralia, drive from all parts of the area to come in to work every day. Our transportation system is overtaxed, it's undersized, and that makes that commute even longer, right? It wouldn't necessarily be for people coming from Eugene or people coming from Hood River or whatnot, driving in. But when they hit that traffic, sometimes that can add another half an hour, an hour delay, just with the traffic. So that's a quality of life issue. The cost of utilities anymore. I know that PGE has raised their rates, and now they're considering another rate increase. People's budgets are struggling, and it's just taking a toll on folks. And it was interesting to hear recently that Oregon ranks the bottom of the housing value, the increase in housing values across the country, where kind of, and that's because it's no longer a go-to state. There's a lot of people that are leaving. Our growth rate is flat. And, but people that are staying in Oregon are moving farther away from the metro region and trying to find places that are affordable. But, you know, that's a summary of at least the sense I get from the folks I've ran into during this break, if you want to call it that. During the break, I did have a couple of opportunities. We gave a tour to two Metro Councilors of the Sunrise Corridor to give them an idea of what our challenges are. And as I was beginning the tour with them, I said, "When I came here back in nineteen eighty to Oregon, do you remember?" I said, "Do you remember what the Sunset Corridor looked like and the Sunrise Corridor looked like?" Now, Sunset Corridor now is Highway Twenty-Six, right? But back then, it was the Sunset Corridor, still is today. But it was a small road. It was a little bit bigger than the Sunrise Corridor is today, but not much. And look at what it is today. It's three, four, or five lanes and places each way. So the investments have really not gone our way. And so in concert with that, there was also, I represented the county at a TriMet line expansion event in Oregon City, and a couple, a few of the mayors were there, Mayor McGriff, Mayor Bully Ostowski, and Mayor Buck from Lake Oswego were there, because they were adding some lines and taking some lines and making some adjustments. But was able to speak on behalf of the people that are trying to, you know, get connections. And again, Clackamas County is not getting the lion's share, or I don't, I think even a proportional share of the transit investments in the region. So we have a lot of areas that don't have basic transit. I'm not talking light rail, I'm just talking basic transit, whether it's shuttles or whether it's local bus service. And I know Commissioner West comes from Wilsonville. They have a great transit system there. It's ran by Smart, you know, offset of the city. But, you know, if you look at where a lot of the transit agencies are in Clackamas County, because it's bigger than TriMet, most of it's rural. And people in rural areas think, "Oh, we don't need transit," but yet the strongest, you know, I talked to the mayor Camby this morning. You know, Camby's got their own transit agency, Sandy, Malala area's got their own. So this is not anything that you need. Transit is something that's very basic. Not all people can drive. And people need to get to doctor's offices. They need to go to the library. They need to go shopping, those essentials. And that's just part of reality. So, but we have a lot of areas in between those that have no transit service whatsoever. So, but I just wanted to share with you a little bit of my interactions and work that I've done in the last couple of weeks. And with that, I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County, and thank you again to our county employees for your work and your service to the people of Clackamas County, and especially to our spirit recipients this morning. I appreciate your work. On the killer drug issue, how do we deal with fentanyl? A biopharmaceutical startup called Ovax is working on a vaccine to block fentanyl. Unlike viruses and bacteria, the immune system does not see opioids as an invader to the immune system. This vaccine would cause your immune system to block opioids. I bring this up because in an environment where Oregon is the highest increased state in opioid deaths, some fifteen-hundred percent increase since 2019, I find it interesting that America is looking at fighting this problem with a vaccine. We have some positive changes in Oregon. That's House Bill Four Thousand and Two, which you've heard, will now make possession of these drugs a misdemeanor resulting in jail or deflection. But the fentanyl disaster is not an accident. It's, in fact, the number-one threat to U.S. national security, in my view, and it is by design. The Chinese Communist Party, we know from social media in China, actually encourages the production of the base elements of fentanyl and the shipment of them to Mexico, where they're blended into these killer fentanyl pills. So what's happening is our nation is being weakened by a weapon called fentanyl. And we can see it all across the nation, not just in big cities now, but in small towns, where our society is being weakened by this killer drug. And like has been mentioned here this morning, we have many programs to deal with fentanyl, to try to aid the suffering that it causes. But those programs across America are costing billions and billions of dollars, billions of dollars that could be utilized for bridges, schools, libraries, and other uses. So I know we beat this issue so often, but I bring it to your attention because this is going to deal, this is going to require everybody becoming involved. Parents, I ask you to sit down with your kids, make sure they're aware of the potential for drugs to come into their school or their social circles. Our Clackamas County website has got some information for you, parents, on how to sit down and talk to your kids about this issue. Also, I would like to ask everyone who has any tips on the selling of drugs in your area to go to the sheriff's website tip sheet and log in and let them know what you have seen. We've got to fight this problem, and it's going to take every one of us to do it. Another reminder, on Five November is the election day, and you have until fifteen October to make sure you're registered. If you go to the clerk's website, click on the Five November Election, then click on organvotes.gov and make sure your voter registration is accurate. And on the lighter side, And on the lighter side, Ben West is not going to like what I'm going to say now, but this has to do with fighting taxes. And, you know, I don't like taxes, but on 5 September, on this day, in 1698, the Tsar of Russia, Peter the Great, imposed a tax on men's beards. And I thought maybe you might, you know, just remember, things could get worse, Ben West.
I oppose that tax.
Thank you very much.
But we're richer for it.
Richer for your beard, thank you.
Wow.
That's fine.
I'm a low-tax guy right here.
I can tell. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, I just, everybody's talking about the break. I had a very lovely time with my break. As Commissioner Scholl always mentions, I have barking dogs. So I spent quite a bit of time with them in the appropriate place, which was a dog park, to let them run and bark and play. And I had the opportunity at that time, I'm kind of a policy wonk, so I basically went through and read a bunch of white papers on childcare, because that's been one of my interests, because I think that having people have opportunities to have access to childcare is part of a larger prosperity initiative to make sure that people can get good jobs, get back to work, make sure their children are cared for safely in a nurturing environment. And so I've been reading quite a bit from the Childcare Coalition of Clackamas County. And who are those folks? They consist of the Clackamas Education Service District, our own early learning hub of Clackamas County, the Clackamas Workforce Partnership, which is our workforce board, and they have sponsors such as Oregon City, PGE, the Oregon Department of Human Services, Trillium Community Health Plan, and cutting-edge, a not-for-profit means you profit. And there's also partner organizations, Family Forward Oregon, Todos Juntos, Clackamas Community College, the Children's Institute, and the City of Estacada. So this group has been working very, very hard on a white paper with partnerships to see how we can increase access to childcare in our state, not just in Clackamas County. And some of the things that have been happened is we have had work groups pulled together that basically includes the steering committee, we've had a communications group, we've had business engagement. One of the things we've been looking at is really, really looking at how we can cooperate with our business community to help them incentivize and increase daycare access for their employees. And this morning, when I had my meeting with our folks, our government folks here, PGA, I mentioned that there was going to be quite a bit of conversation about this, basically in the upcoming legislative session. So I've been kind of honing my skills and reading as many white papers as I can to help with that, because basically our county needs 11,000 childcare slots in order to no longer be a childcare desert, because right now we are in a childcare desert. And 15% of children under two have access to childcare slots, and it is preventing adults getting back to work, and it contributes to the workforce shortage and the economy in order to be able to fully recover. Childcare providers are having a hard time keeping and hiring staff, and basically the other difficulty and hurdles we see are requirements, the regulatory requirements for buildings for childcare, because you have to have the right toilet size, you have to have the right sink size, you have to make sure that you have an outdoor space for children to have space and to play. And really, it really more than often impacts women, because it seems that it's mostly our child caring responsibilities. And basically, that's a huge part of our workforce that could use some help to move up the prosperity ladder. So the vision of the coalition is that all families in Clackamas County will have access to quality, affordable childcare that meets their needs, and we will come together as a community to identify solutions to existing gaps in services and centering families in childcare professions in all ways that we do this. One of the things that's happening, you will be invited to an opening at the Education Service District where they're having their new early childcare education facility opening. That's been in the works for a while, it's going to be a great opportunity for people, and I'll be glad to keep you informed colleagues so we can all go to that site opening. In any case, that's what I've been working on, and plus, I've been working on a prosperity initiative with the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee, NACO, and I'm also going to be presenting some more issues concerning childcare when I move back into getting to those meetings as well. So that's my news, and the dogs are in good health, and we are expecting puppies. So, Mark, if you want a puppy.
You have to ask Axana.
A whackadoodle.
Do not tell my poli.
Oh, no, really? No, I have puppies. Okay.
On the public record.
It is.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Appreciate all the updates today. Yes, we had a break over, for two and a half weeks, and it was nice because, well, I did not leave on vacation anywhere because I was very concerned about the wildfires. However, we skated by so far, crossed our fingers. However, it's supposed to be increased heat this week to 100 degrees and low humidity and the frightful east wind. It is just like a match on gasoline. So I'm just implore people, please don't let off fireworks right now. Save them for New Year's Eve when it's snowy. They're prettier that way, okay? With that in mind, Clackamas County is opening cooling centers across the county, and the list is extensive. I was even impressed. If you want to find out where those cooling centers are to avoid the heat, there are daytime and evening cooling centers at clackamas.us/relie. I'll say that again, clackamas.us/relie to get your assistance that you need. One of the activities that I have been engaged in, and I've let commissioners know this too, is there's an effort by Metro President to rewrite the supportive housing services tax measure and governance measure. And I've been meeting with the other two tri-chairs, Lynn Peterson, and we've been in negotiations on this. Keep it in mind that we don't need to vote on it because Metro claims they have authority to do what they want, when they want. Just letting you know. And the effort is, it's a two-pronged effort that's going forward, and I don't have any problem talking out of school on this because I think it's a known fact. Metro President wants to reduce the tax burden on people, which I really like that idea, through indexing. As you know, if you make over $120,000 a year, you're taxed at a certain level. She wants to raise that up to 150, and if you're a married couple, $200,000 a year, she wants to raise that to $225,000 a year. That will give tax relief to 15,000 taxpayers in the region. There are currently 75,000 taxpayers being taxed on this. Additionally, she wants to change the governance model. The governance model is quite cumbersome and complicated, so we're in discussions with that. And my position on the governance model is counties need to retain their autonomy and their authority to how we spend those taxes, because after all, they're collected by our citizens. Clackamas County gets 22% of the overall tax because we're the third largest or the third smallest in the region, and we need to be able to have a say with that going forward. That's phase one. Phase two is a vote to the public, a referendum in May, the primary, to lower the tax rate in addition to indexing. Extend the term that we collect these monies on from 10 years to, I'm not sure what the end date of that is. And we can use this money on sticks and bricks to build more affordable housing. So this is what's on the table. I feel my job is to, it's twofold. You know, this board has made certain promises, and we voted to maintain a certain level. What's going to happen to the level if our tax income is reduced, and commissioners, it will be reduced by a lot. But I'm also mindful of the businesses and the people who feel a huge tax burden on them. This will give tax relief to our citizens and the businesses, and I'm telling you, there's a big, big organization behind this, and it's the Portland Metro Chamber of Commerce. They want a 30% tax reduction, because they say in Portland, in Monoma County, too many of our high-income earners are moving out and it's hurting our businesses. So there's that side. By one side, you say, mm, we're reducing the tax and we're supporting businesses, which I love, I'm a proponent of. So we're maneuvering through this. The Metro claims on the fall initiative, they can do it through adopting their ordinance and resolution. And right now, I'm getting a legal opinion on that. And then it'll be up for a vote, the remainder of that, next fall. The danger of not doing something right now is, the Portland Metro Chamber will probably put something on the ballot if we don't put something on the ballot. And I don't think, as wonderful as that group of people is, they're just wonderful business people trying to make it, okay? The danger of that is, they really don't know or understand how, for instance, Clackamas County delivers our services, or there may be onerous pieces in that. So we're negotiating, we've done it this week, last week, the week before, and it's trying times, but kind of exciting times too. So that's really all I can say today. Like I say, I do appreciate the fact that Lynn Peterson has brought the tri-chairs to the table to get our opinions on it going forward, and we'll see what comes out in the mix. So just be mindful of that. Thank you, commissioners, for a wonderful business meeting. See, no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.